Raise my hand up.
Well, I didn't call on you yet, so hang on, okay? Thank you for the reminder, and Leanne, are you?
Morning.
Okay, I just, I had seen your hand up and I wanted to make sure I didn't miss it. Uh, Lee, that was the only comment you had of the time?
There are 15 people waiting to get in, and you too.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you stand, please, and say your name?
I just had a couple of questions, so...
Tell me your name.
Peggy Matthews.
Thank you, Peggy.
I understand that the winter roads will still be by contract?
Absolutely.
But there are likely to be emergency road situations during the winter, so this would be at least part-time year-round where the person would be on call or something like that for these kinds of things that happen?
Right.
So that would, so that would be specified. And, um, uh, I think it was in 2016, I read in the annual report that this town bought a road management system. I have not had the privilege of looking at that software, but apparently it hasn't been used, at least when I've started paying attention since the spring, what's going on in the roads in this town. Does that road management system, would that help with all your FEMA stuff and those kind of answering those kinds of questions, if that was just kept up to date? Does anybody maybe from the road committee have looked at that and see what it entails?
So actually, the road committee has used it upon several occasions, and every time they get the laptop back, which is a shared laptop, including this time, much of the data entry was completely wiped clean. So they are starting again with the laptop, and the software is installed. They made data entry over several years, and I think, um, I think Jay was one of them that did data entry into it, from the previous road committee.
Often we'll have programs like that, you could save data, open different files, this data file, that data file, so apparently that wasn't, I mean, I don't know about that people.
It's a road management software that the state recommends, am I correct? Yeah. And we purchased it several years ago, before I was on the SLU board, and it's highly recommended and does a great job to manage and track road stuff. It'll be, once it's full and we continue to use it year after year, we'd be able to say, this is the size of the road we put in in 2022, and this is the contractor we used, or this is when the road washed out, and this is when it was fixed, and it's gonna give a lot of great information.
And my third question is, other than the things that have evolved in the last year around the roads, over the last, you know, several terms of road repair, have there been like ongoing persistent similar complaints, things that aren't being done, or roads aren't being looked to, or something like that? I just want to bring it, if it was just a recent thing, or it has been going on for a while?
I'm gonna say there were many, many calls and complaints about things not being followed up with, as well as, um, not working with our road committee, uh, not getting information in on time. It's one of the reasons why we're putting forward this, and out on the campaign trail, people told me door-to-door, many of the issues that were happening, and so it's one of the things that I...
So it's been ongoing, I, I can, you know, I wasn't anticipating, I'm sorry, I never ever did anticipate.
Yeah, it does great work. I guess we really do quite useful.
So, um, hang on just a second. The next person I have on my list is Dick.
Hi, Joe.
You had your, you had your hand up a bit ago, and gentlemen, you're on my list, the gentleman in the camo hat. Go ahead.
I just wondered, you know, from what Susan said about the timing, is that why this was dropped on the town like a big bombshell, and why there were more people here tonight than there usually are at a regular town meeting in June? That's my question.
So you want, you want the repeated information about the timing of the meeting? Can you repeat the answer?
So when I contacted the main municipal association about proposing to change the position, they go, you have 100 days before the election, we realized, here's the calendar, and we're like, whoa, if we're gonna even propose this, we need to get it out, and that's what we did. And we proposed it before the papers were drawn, and, which was two weeks ago, and then this past week, we started getting out papers on Monday, right?
Thank you.
Terry.
Hang on just a second, I'm, I'm, I don't have people's names, so I have to write down what you look like or what you're wearing? And so the next person on my list is Colleen, and then it's the gentleman back here, and ma'am, your name?
Polly.
Polly, thank you, hang tight, Polly, go ahead, Colleen.
I'm Colleen Bullock, but I do want to follow up, first I heard about the wage that would be paid for this part-time person, and you've mentioned software. Since the job description is being changed to work with different softwares to facilitate all of the input of information that needs to be done, is there any additional fees for new software or new licensing that will come because of this?
So we already own the software, we bought it in 2016, and we would like to be able to use that consistently. FEMA and NEMA accounts, I don't know if you've heard it, but you get online, build your account, and then you can log in road repairs and GPS coordinates, there's no fee or licensing for that. Um, we do have licensing within the town office for our software, from Microsoft or Word or those type of things, and it covers the people in our office, so...
So I think it'd be a good idea for you to stand, or one of your colleagues, if you're answering, so people in the back can hear.
Okay.
Okay? Um, sir, tell your name, please.
My name's Alvin Morizelli, and I'm gonna touch on Peggy Matthews' question there. I was on the road committee a bunch of years ago, we had a five-year plan. We tried to get the road commissioner in to help us with the five-year plan, and every time we tried to move on the five-year plan, it just got shut down, never made any headway. We started on the road committee again, and we started trying to do a five-year plan, which we need a five-year plan due to the state's specifications, and then get shut down. So every time we shut down, anything we're trying to do with MNA, or state municipalities, trying to figure out what we need to do with the roads, repaying, new pavement, I went to a vessel when I first did this, we got all road leaders to put them on all roads in town. So some of the roads in town, that were the most traveled roads, are still not done, even though we got a whole pile of money to do the roads that they're supposed to do. So these guys worked on the software that they're talking about, when they were on the road committee, they got frustrated and they quit. So the road committee never had any teeth to get the stuff done. So that's the answer to Peggy's answer there, because we've been trying really, really hard to make all this work and save you guys money. This is the first time I've seen a bunch of people here really concerned about what's going on in the town, and I love it. Because half the time, we're down here fighting by ourselves, saddling it up, not having anywhere. So I appreciate you guys coming through your info. Either way, to show that you care about the town.
Polly.
My question is, what made this be an emergency? I see nothing as something that couldn't wait until the annual town meeting.
Okay, let's get an answer.
Actually, I...
Can you stand in?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm Kathleen Landry, uh, newest select board member, and, um, actually, that was good timing, Polly. Um, I hope that this answers, it is a timely thing, um, and hopefully this will explain it. Good evening, and thank you all so much for coming out tonight. It does encourage me as well that townspeople want to be involved and informed. I am newly elected to the select board, but in my short time, I have tried to listen to the townspeople and feed their voice. Many ideas and concerns have been brought up to the board since I have come into office, and please know that we are doing our best to address them all. I need to emphasize that the issue before us tonight is not against a person, it is to look at and discuss the position. A couple of the questions we should ask ourselves regarding the best thing for the town is, one, why should the position remain elected? Because this is how it's always been done, doesn't really seem logical to me. Two, why shouldn't the job description be updated in order to meet the constantly changing world we are in and the demands that come with it? Roads are our thing out here, the biggest ticket item, actually, so we need to listen to the people when they have concerns. That's why, that's what we were elected to do, that is our job. Looking at the road budget comps, um, looking at the three neighboring towns, I was looking at the numbers, so I'm strictly going at this from a business perspective. The town of Hartford has an elected road commissioner. When summer roads, winter roads, and commissioner numbers are all added together, and then divided by the 49.6 miles of road that we have in town, the total for road maintenance per mile is $18,119.
Per mile?
Per mile, no, no, yes, per mile. The town of Summer also has an elected road commissioner. When all of their road numbers are added together and divided by their 48 miles, they pay $18,411 to maintain each road mile. The town of Buckfield has an appointed road commissioner. When summer and winter roads are all added together and divided by their 44 miles, they pay $12,017 per mile. The town of Canton has an appointed roads foreman, and for their 28 miles of roads, they pay $10,333 per mile. So Hartford and Summer, with their elected positions, pay just over $6,000 more per mile than our two neighboring towns that have appointed positions. In a nutshell, multiply the $6,000 by our 49.6 miles in town, that's almost $300,000. These are significant numbers, and if we as a select board choose to ignore them, we would not be doing due to taxpayers any injustice. Imagine what close to $300,000 would look like back in our budget.
Kathleen, I have to interrupt you. I gave you the floor to answer a question.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if, excuse, hang on, let me finish, please. There is a three-minute time limit, even for select people, so what, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, are you nearly done?
Yes, yes, I'm finishing.
Thank you. And I'm not, and again, there may be an opportunity to speak more than once, once everyone that wants has a chance to, but there's no difference on that side of the table than on this side of the table for this evening, okay?
I'm just nervous, I'm sorry.
That's all right, thank you.
I was asked why the appointed position would be better for the town of Hartford, Hartford compared to the elected position, and my answer is, in the dollars. In closing, this isn't against a person, it's simply an attempt at good and responsible financial, responsible financial change in an ever-changing world, and it's budget time, and it's time to really look at the budget, and that's the urgency. We have to look at the numbers, we have to be responsible with your taxpayers' dollars, and that is the urgency. Thank you.
Thank you. So Sue, are you, are you still timing? Because I can't time and do this at this, okay, thank you. She answered it at the time that she stood up, that had to do with the call to the MMA. Again, there's an answer, you don't have to like it, but there's an answer, okay? Yes, sir, you had your hand up, please state your name.
My name is David, and my question is liability. When this appointed road commissioner goes off and goes 30 feet into a residence and trespass, who's liable?
The appointed road commissioner, that would be the town.
The town would be liable for going in because they're taking the direction from the select board, is that correct?
An appointed road commissioner would be an employee foreman.
And so, and if this employee did it again, who would be liable for it?
Same thing, and then they would be accountable for their actions, we'd take proper steps.
Hang on just a second, it's only because I know your name, but I can't think of it at the moment. No, not only, Darryl. Darryl's hand was up, and then the lady, what's your name, ma'am, I'm gonna read here?
Jennifer.
Jennifer, you're after Darryl, Darryl, you on the floor.
So I'd like to speak to the question of the liability. As things are now, because we don't put so many things out to bid, what happens is the town ends up with liability, whereas if we put it out to bid, the contractor who got the bid would have to have insurance in the liability, we'd lie on the, uh, on the contractor, not the town. With a appointed or elected, if we are using the bid process for anything over $15,000, the liability would go to the contractor, not the town.
Thank you, Jennifer.
My question is, if you're appointing someone, is it going to be, are they gonna be like you all are, that if there's an issue, we're gonna leave a message at the town office if you're open? Because I know many times, my husband's a bus driver, and we call Ben McNeil several times a year to say, oh, Jim, there's a tree down, oh, there's this, there's that, 365, 24/7, Ben, Brandon and his guys get out there and clear the roads, and I've got messages into the select board going back to November, and I'm still waiting for my call back. So if you appoint somebody, are they gonna be available so the buses can get through, or are we gonna leave messages?
Oh, yeah, did he call up? The road commissioner, as in an appointed position with the new role, would still be available 24/7, that'd be part of his position, and whoever does the road work, say trees down, and the road commissioner, it's a huge pain, it's sitting against wires, then he would call SCMP and coordinate with them.
Hang on, Jennifer.
So from there, if there was a car accident, or a snowdrift, or whatever, they would still call the road commissioner, the road commissioner would contact either the emergency road crew, like, I'll give you an example, say there's a big snowdrift on a road curving road, and they can't get through, the person would call the road commissioner, the road commissioner would call the people with the contractor, wow, and say, can you get out there?
And is that hourly? Every time there's something, if it's a junction in and out, it was, it was a hourly position?
Yeah, and probably charge two hours.
Hang on just a second, Sue, are you finished?
I am.
Answering the question, thank you. Leanne has asked to address the body, she's a non-resident. Typically, we would limit comments to residents without permission of the folks that are here, um, so I, I would entertain a motion that would allow Leanne to speak.
I'd like to motion that Leanne speaks.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed, thank you. Nothing personal, right? Leanne, Leanne, would you stand, would you speak, please?
Just the liability issue, we don't have town equipment, so no matter if it's elected or appointed, it's, we're still gonna contract an excavator, you know, company to do the work. The road commissioner, I don't think is gonna go up there with a shovel and do road work, property.
Could we make the distinction between what we're looking at?
Polly, hang on just a second, okay, do you have a question about what the decision is? That's what I'm trying to, tell me what, what, what your point is.
My question is, they keep, we're looking at replacing a road foreman with the road commissioner, no, the other way around, either way, but...
Let Polly get a question out, okay?
The two questions, each response is using road commissioner in both ways, instead of separating them, because that's using, we're discussing separating the two positions.
So let's see if there's some, if one of the selectmen can add some clarity for you.
So every town has to have a road commissioner, um, in Buckfield, and they're town manager, and so no matter, if we were to change this, there's still, it is a road commissioner position, it's mandated, if we had a town manager, it would be that person. I know, I heard in the town of Green, that it's this lovely young lady over here, and they have a road, a whole road crew, so it's very different than besides town. So whoever gets this position will still be doing road commissioner duties, where if people have a problem, we're still gonna be responding just as quickly. Right now, the select board is often called when we're too across the road. I, I get called when there's water across the road, but we're gonna be as responsive as we can be, hopefully within an hour, get somebody right out there to fix that unless there's downed wires. So this internal appointed road person position is still gonna be responding to people. The town office is only open part-time, so that road commissioner's number will be published as are ours all the time, and I know that because I get several calls on the weekends, nights, and emails, so, yeah.
Thank you, Sue, have a seat, hang on just a second. Lenny and Peggy, you've already spoken, so you're...
I just wanted to say, they still have an answer, Peggy's...
Lenny? It's not your turn to talk.
She's still on me.
Okay, you don't have to like the answer, the answers are what they are.
They keep using them interchangeably.
Stop talking, it's not your turn. Sir, I never asked your name.
My?
I'm sorry.
Aaron.
Aaron?
Yep.
Um, Aaron, I had you next on my list.
So, Dan brought up a good point, uh, the town has no equipment, um, and Susan just brought up another point that I want to make, uh, if they have no equipment, if you get a call in the line like Jennifer said, what are they using for a chainsaw to get out the road? What are they, what are they answering around the phone? How do they answer? Who's using shovels? Where, how are we getting this equipment? I'd like an answer for that, and then where does the money come from?
Sure. Yeah, come again. Probably...
My name's Kathy, hello. Uh, right now, road commissioner we have now has their own chainsaws, so if we go from road commissioner to appointed road foreman, then I would probably think the town would have to buy chainsaws.
Can you answer a second part, where's the money come from? And what about the phone?
Well, one question at a time. I, I know, I, you reminded her, which is great, well, let's...
What was your second question, Dan?
Where's the money coming from, and I would, I would sign the road foreman's phone, if you're paying for that.
That's a good question.
Been waiting, it's been asking for two weeks.
That's a good question.
So the select board gets called, or at least I do, at least 15 calls a week, and they...
Hey, excuse me, let her finish her answer, thank you.
We are not supplied a phone. We took the physician, and Kathy, I think, got her own track phone for town calls, but they call me. Most people call me, they call my phone, that's also where I get real calls, it's also, and I don't ask the town for a phone, and I pick up my phone, and I'm not in a meeting, and pick up my phone and...
Sue, I need, I need you not to talk about what you do, but answer the question.
So at this point, the road commissioner would use his own phone unless he got so many calls that he wanted a town phone, then we would address that at the time.
So we don't have a phone?
I don't believe the current road commissioner has a town phone either.
And where's the money coming from? Is he, I need to answer that question.
We would have to put it in the budget.
Thank you, hang on just a second. Maury, you had your hand up.
Uh, I did, but the question hasn't been answered, thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated. Sir, what's your name, please?
Larry Stroud.
Thank you, Larry.
Excuse me, my question along with, with, uh, with money is, right now, we have an elected road commissioner that if you call, somebody comes up, that's part of being a commissioner. As far as from what I remember past, road commissioners used to be required to have a piece of equipment to be able to do small jobs that need to be done in an emergency situation. I don't know if it's still that way or not, but if you want to hire somebody, and you're saying that they're gonna be on call 24/7, and they're gonna have their own phone for $27 now, where are you gonna find that person?
Here.
Somebody in the world is gonna take that job. You know, call me at 1:00 in the morning, you know, or anybody else, I don't get it.
Thank you. Again, I'm, I'm not gonna call on people who've already spoken once until I know that everyone else that wants to be heard has been heard, and then, sir, would you stand up and tell us your name?
I am Greg Brad. I think the answer that you were looking for was that if this doesn't all go down in 400 days, then we, oh, we're not gonna talk about it, but whoever, we would continue to elect a road commissioner this summer, just like we always do, and that would be a two-year contract, so the board would be, they would have to suffer with whoever we decide we want to be our road commissioner for under two years, unless they get rushed through now. That's the answer, not what you guys do. Both of you answer exactly what you do, not really why the rush, that's why the rush. If it doesn't go through, we have to work a little, and then it's another two years. So that's the answer to that, um, pretty much. I think that three or four people are asking, why is the rush? Why are we all here right now? That's the answer, I believe.
Thank you. Again, Peggy, I'm not gonna call on you until I know everyone who wants to speak has had a chance. Maury? Speak up, so people can hear you, please.
Oh, definitely, I'll speak up. My question is, um, if we go to a appointed commissioner, um, then bids will go out, and bids are gonna go out anyway, okay? That's what they want to be, uh, the town votes it. Now, if you've got several contractors, if you find one contractor that's low, and the select board accepts it, okay, uh, and then the next time, a bid goes to somebody else. Now, is there gonna be consistency between these contractors, or is there not gonna be? Because if, the way we have it now, we have a road commissioner, and I think he's pretty consistent in what he does in building roads, okay? And there won't be any variation, so I look at it like that, okay? Will there be any inconsistencies in different contractors building our roads? Thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to answer?
We currently have contractors on file, and so like when the road commissioner does get called, and road work needs to be done, he contacts either McNeil Farms, Johnson Escavation to go and do the work. That's how it works now. We would still have contractors on call, and the road commissioner would contact McNeil Farms, Johnson Escavation, or anyone else, especially in emergency road work, where they would get paid on materials to go and do that. And we too care about our roads, I know, because I get a lot of calls about them. So consistency in quality roads are very important. We're not out to get anybody, things have changed, and things need to be updated and kept consistent, and, and planning, planning works, and so that's what we're looking for.
You've answered the question, that's, okay, good. Sir, would you state your name?
Yeah, Jason Landry. I would just like to say that, like I, before I read this, I'd like to say that I feel that it would be a little bit more consistency with the appointed road foreman that was willing to work with contractors that weren't picked by him. We currently, we recently had a job down Bradville Road, and there was no guidance there, it was different, it looked off. Now I'm gonna read this real quick, if you don't mind. Back in August, I was asked to be part of the roads, roads and ordinance committees. The hope was that I would help the committee figure out which roads from worst to best needed repairs. For our town ordinances, we must have these committees in boards, they are the checks and balances for the town, so not one person runs it. We all have different opinions and ideas for how the town should run. I may not agree with everything the select board and committees do, but I do respect all that they are and are trying to do for this town. We should all keep an open mind and allow the board the opportunity to do the job the majority elected them to do. This town is a business, and it needs to be run like one. The select board has asked for bids and real numbers on projects in order to budget accordingly. These bids are open to all contractors. There is so much animosity and half-truth on Facebook affecting how we progress. Appointed versus elected, appointed will be tasked with working with the select board and road committee, focusing on the biggest needs first. Appointed will focus on the best person for the job, not a popularity contest. Appointed allows accountability and/or redirection of the individual if need be, in proper trade and could be mandated. The town has been told by the main municipal association for years that there's a conflict of interest with the road commissioner and contractor being the same person, which touches on what Maury was talking about, and the town auditor also made reference and suggested a spending cap. FEMA was surprised to hear the road commissioner and the contractor were the same. Currently, we have a road commissioner that uses his company to do most of the work, this doesn't allow for checks and balances.
Jason, I need to drop just a minute.
He's got one minute and two seconds, now he's got...
Three minutes is a long time, and I practiced all of this.
Jason, I'm sorry, I, I'm getting some unsolicited assistance, and I'm just double-checking. I know, so I've interrupted you?
It's nothing new, it's in my world.
You, you have time.
Thank you in person. Current, I appreciate that, I need all the prayers I can get. Currently, we do pray for you. Currently, we have a road commissioner that uses his company to do most of the work, this doesn't allow for checks and balances, whether the work is done correctly or incorrectly is never discussed, and that leaves us to just trust their word. It is an unethical practice, and even more so that we have allowed this to happen. As of now, the commissioner is supposed to not only work with the select board and roads committee, but also make sure that all road work in town is done correctly. Since I've been on the road committee, last night was the first meeting, the commissioner attended, he not only, he did not only want to, he didn't want to work, he not only didn't want to... He not only didn't want to work with us, but he also wanted to talk about past issues that could be changed. He tried. We tried to work with him until he... Until his walking out made it clear, made it obvious he wasn't willing. That's it?
That's it.
And that was submitted by Paul Burmeister. He was unable to be examined.
Thank you. Sir, with the ball cap and the plaid, you had your hand up. Yeah, you, looking around. What... State your name, please.
Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. You have the floor.
I'm wondering, well, as far as the Brad Hill job, didn't put in a good bid. And he's done the roads around here forever, doing a damn good job and saving us money. I work road construction. And then you guys hired a damn landscaper. And so, he's finished the job. And you... Plus, you give twenty bucks to... Twenty thousand to start. You shouldn't... He shouldn't get any money until he stops doing roads. And it should go in parks. Then he screws it up.
Kevin, what... Kevin, I'm going to interrupt you for a moment because we're not really here to evaluate any particular individual. We're talking about the change in the process, not in the people.
That's what he did.
Maybe I was too busy wondering what time it was to pay attention.
All I'm saying is, people don't... They don't have a clue about how to build a road. And then they're knocking all the ones that did a good job. The roads around here are doing really... Look at the roads they did. And they saved the town a lot of money. And many just want to spend it, and they put people... Put people in there that don't have a clue. A damn landscaper?
Kevin, thank you. You've been heard.
A joke.
Sir, the floor, I don't know your name, but your hand was up following him.
Second round of an appointed road commissioner. Trying to rule the appointed.
First of all, tell us your name.
Larry Don.
Thank you, Larry. And your question is, who would be appointed?
Yeah. No, who would do the appointing?
Who would do the appointing?
Yes.
We would... We would post the position, just like we just did with the... With the annual control officer. We would go through an interview process, and the most qualified person would be hired.
Right.
It's a less boring.
I'm assuming with input from the road committee?
Hang on just a second. Let him get an answer to the question. Would there be input by the road committee?
I mean, it would seem important to me to have the road committee involved.
I... It's... You get to ask the question, but they have to answer it.
If there's multiple resumes, we would want them to look over and see what the qualifications, where they stand. And they are a part of our team, and they are... They're... What is that called? So, is this a confidential... Sorry.
Okay. That's... Okay. We're only going to talk one at a time. If you're not willing to do that, we're going to have to be done. And that doesn't sound very fair, now, does it? Okay? I have four people who've raised their hand who have already spoken. I will not call on you until everyone else who wants to speak has a term. So, I'm just going to repeat that. And Leanne, are you... Are you wishing to offer some clarification in your role? Because you had your hand up. If it's not for that purpose, I'm going to put you down in that return list as well.
It can read.
Thank you. Okay. I don't know why I can't think of... Elizabeth? There we go. Can you stand, Elizabeth? Thank you.
This is a little follow-up on this man's discussion of Brad Hill. I'd like to say, so this is a small town. We should operate as a small town, where we all know each other and total. So, this guy who was hired for Brad Hill, he didn't know us. He parked his big equipment on my daughter's land, on top of some bushes that I had planted. Because he didn't know us. He said, "Oh, I didn't know anybody lived there or used the land or whatever." So, that doesn't work.
I'm currently looking for someone who has not spoken yet that has some thoughts to share or a question to ask. Again, so I've got this gentleman over here, and...
And Dorian.
Dorian, you have the floor, Dorian.
I think things are changing, and things are getting so technical now. Maybe some of the things that we really need to think about is maybe going to the town manager system instead of just coming up with three or four people to do different parts of jobs. The town manager would pick up all of the jobs and then go back to the selection of assistants. So, that's something for us in town to think about. And all the towns around us have town managers.
Sir, say your name.
Isaac Leal.
Thank you, Isaac.
I know you guys... It seems like you guys have a hard time with being appointed. But let's not forget, Leanne was at Wondertown Park. She's appointed by the select board.
Unfortunately.
Yes, but it's not your turn.
Anyone. If you live in town, you can be appointed. If you live out of town, you can still be appointed. We can get the best person for the job by being appointed. Leanne, excellent toddler, is appointed.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Could you state your name, please?
Sure. Teresa Bennett.
Thank you, Teresa.
I have a serious concern because of the fact that if we appoint somebody, the people that are going to appoint him as...
Or her.
Or her, as a so-called road commissioner slash appointed, are not going to have the background knowledge to make a good decision about the work that this man can do. When right now, we have an elected official who has background, experience. The town knows what it can and can't do. And, you know, they've done nothing but beat him down ever since he had open-heart surgery. I'm really concerned about some of the decisions that the select board is making and has been making over the last several months. And I just think if we go with this appointed commissioner, then we're going to suffer financially big damage. That's not a question. That's a statement.
Lee, you have not spoken. You may.
Well, other than to say that it would be a great... Yeah, um, okay, so I think it was Aaron who brought up the subject of, oh, there's a tree down. The road commissioner gets called out to go cut up a tree that is in the road. What's he going to use for a chainsaw? He's going to use his own equipment. At some point, an appointed road commissioner may not be using their own equipment to have to use town equipment. And what I want to say is that, my friends, is a slippery slope. How long is it going to be before he needs a truck? It says town art product on it. How long is it going to be before we need quite some equipment? Before we have to have a... Have a town garage? Do you remember that, yeah? What it costs for a town garage?
Lee? Not asking questions of the audience. You're asking...
No, I guess it's a... You know, in a case, how long is it going to be before we have our own equipment? We have an appointed road foreman.
Watch it. Watch it.
I'm looking for a...
Hang on just a second. I'm still... I'm trying to be patient. Excuse me. It doesn't have an answer. Well, then, then we're not going to spend any more time on it. The question is the answer, if you will. Larry, I'm not going to call on people who've already spoken until I know that those who have not have had a shot. That doesn't mean that if you don't speak up now, I won't call on you later if you haven't done it yet. It just means I want to give everybody a chance. Okay? Peggy?
I just had a brief comment. You were saying that there's somebody available you can contact twenty-four seven. But on the town website currently, the same phone number is given for Susan Willet, Kathleen Landry, Kathy Lowe, and the town office. So, if I call that number right now, will somebody respond to that number? I just asked you. It's a question. Yes, that was a tough question. It's ringing.
Thank you, Peggy. Dick, you had your hand up.
That's just information.
You did. I don't... What's his name? Richard. I'm calling you, Dick. I'm sorry about that.
Well, I just want a question to be at this time. I understand that with an appointed foreman, most of the work will be bid out. How, with a relatively small amount of roads that we have in this town, how much equipment would you expect somebody would have that would visit on a small road that we have as compared to the equipment that Bill currently has available? What's my question?
Do I understand the question, Richard, to be, what is the expectation of equipment on the part of anybody who's interviewed to be appointed? Is there an equipment and... That's... Yeah, thank you. Requirement.
So, right now, our road commissioner, when there's work to be done, he is not the one that goes out and does it. He contacts a contractor that we have already got pricing from called McNeil Farms. Neil Farms, like Brandon or Emily or Chris would go out and go and fill the holes or pull the tree out or whatever. The road commissioner calls the contractor. Are they available? If contractors aren't available, they call another contractor. The current, the road commissioner internally, as a foreman, is still going to call the companies that are contracted with the town and see if they can handle that issue.
That wasn't really in.
Uh, thank you. Leonard, you're on my list.
Yeah.
Can you?
All I was trying to say before was they keep using road commissioner and road foreman interchangeably, which is what Paulie mentioned that was confusing people. It's one or the other. And the other thing is, they're claiming this is not a good person, but in every meeting we've had, there has been criticism of him than there is tonight.
Well, I will try to cut it off. I apologize if I missed some of it. I... It is not my intention because that is not why we're here. Randy, I have you next on my list.
It sounds like you guys want someone that everyone expects someone to be there twenty-four hours a day for a small thing like wanting to cut out a tree out of the road. Like, I know it seems like a big deal to some people, but guys like us that punch chainsaws, it's really no big deal, you know, to vote. But it is what it is. It's the middle of the night, whatever, what have you. But then you want to turn around and give the big money-making job maybe out to bid to somebody. But you want the local guy to take care of the hassle in the middle of the night. It's like twenty-seven bucks a mile.
Yeah.
To add on your letter that you read, the first sentence was, we don't trust the guy that we voted for to make that decision, pretty much, was why would we... Something about why would we trust him to make the decision? Well, we all voted, actually, a lot of contractors voted for him, knowing that we know how to build roads and stuff, and we trust him. Actually, more people with more knowledge than the board had about building roads voted for him. So, we trust to do the job. I don't think we should give up our right to vote on anything, whether it be the school budget or street lights. We shouldn't give up our right to vote on it regardless of how we feel about it or the board. I don't think we should give up our right to vote. That's... That's how I feel. Just trying to make it a statement. If you want to talk about conflict of interest, you compare us to the neighboring towns. Two of the towns you compare us to don't really count. They have their own garages, their own equipment. They're liable. So, you got to compare us to Sumner. Sumner's road commissioner went out this summer and bought himself a brand-new bidding excavator and put it immediately on the town's work. I'm not mocking the guy. But nobody in their town is screaming conflict of interest. I'm talking a brand-new sheet for him personally and put it on the roads. So, I don't see many brand-new machines sitting quarter-mile down the road. I don't think we're getting screwed. Okay? That's why we're here. That's... That's all I have to say.
Arlene, you had wanted to speak again.
Well, I'm thinking about what occurred in that people go apply for doing the work. And if this person who did the work at the top of Brad Hill Roads did not have the equipment and did not have the expertise in doing road work, never, why was he picked? And why wasn't the current commissioner tending to that? And there's a cove that needs to be replaced. And they only boarded it with rocks, cribbed it with rocks, instead of replacing it, where Ben, in his knowledge, knows how big a cove it now that that should have. But the select board would not listen to him. And so, why was somebody who is not qualified, who has no equipment, allowed to do the work? How do we know when you do this appointee and you do this road committee the way you're doing it, hoping to do it, do we know you're going to pick somebody unlike that person? Because you might think, well, he's starting a business. We need to help him. I don't know what the reason was, but he was not qualified to do that work. And I would love an answer.
So, I understand your question, Arlene, to be, how will you judge the qualifications before appointing someone?
Because they've proved that they don't.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Or do you just want to make a statement?
No, I'm... That's a question.
Question. How will you determine the qualifications before appointing someone?
If this became an appointed position, an employee position, we would send out the notification for them to apply. They might fill out the application or their resume. And then we would go through them and look for the matching qualifications, and we would call them for an interview. But why didn't they?
Questions answered. You don't have to like the answer.
Why didn't?
Arlene, you don't get to like the question. You can vote how you want on Monday. But tonight, you got your question answered.
I have a question. It wasn't answered. No.
I saw another hand back here. Was it Jennifer? You are already on my list. Next, I had Leanne. Arlene, I'll... I'll put you on the third list if you want to speak again. Leanne, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, in response to Isaac's statement. I know this isn't about the town clerk position, but I wasn't elected for ten years straight.
Leanne?
Yeah?
Not comparable.
Okay.
It's not... So, it's out of order.
Okay.
We have to talk about the one thing that's on the agenda tonight, which is the proposed change in the road commission.
All right, yes, yes. No one does any road work in town. No contractor does any road work in town, whether it's up to bid or not, if they don't sign a contract. That's all there is.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah. Just to clarify on my other question about the appointed road commissioner. I think at the end of it, you said, if you do work as a team with the committee, you would have input. The committee would have input on the... You do work as a team.
Right.
Sir? A gentleman in the back? Sir? Put his hand up. Sir, I don't know your name. Kevin, you have the floor.
All right. This is my question. What old people here have used the handicap zone? And I wonder why the sheriff's got a parking handicap zone?
Amen. Amen.
Did anybody get an answer?
Jennifer, you're on...
I'm just trying to hold up from the sheriff. Is it a handicap? Why are you parking the handicap zone? Can anybody get an answer?
I... You've asked your question. I think we're looking around, wondering who we're talking about here.
The sheriff is parked in the handicap zone. He wants to know why he's there. It's a simple question.
Thank you. Um, I think you could go right over and ask him. Right now, we're going to stick... We're going to stick with the topic on the agenda. Jennifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, I wanted to follow up. Isaac gave a good point.
Jennifer, can you stand, please, so we can hear you? Kevin? Kevin? Speak quietly. We're running a meeting here. Jennifer, go for it.
On the appointed position, I think Charlie and Leanne does a great job at the town office. But I want to make sure that I can get to work safely when we have bad weather. I want to make sure that my son can get to school safely. So, I'm not sure when we have a board that rotates every couple of years, you're going to appoint somebody. We're stuck. So, if they don't know these roads, if they haven't been doing the... So if they don't know these roads, if they haven't been doing these roads for four decades, we're stuck. You know, what insurance do we have that our kids are going to be safe? And we talked about the road committee. The road committee didn't see any bids for road work on Pratt Hill. They weren't any part of that. That was all you ladies. The road committee had nothing to do with that. They never saw bids. We were never any part of that. So again, we're going to have three select board members. You're going to make these choices for us, and we're stuck with it. And then maybe you'll be here in a couple of years, maybe you won't. So what insurance do you have that my son's going to get to school safely?
We have, McNeil Farms right now has our winter plowing bid. We hope they will continue. If they decide not to or don't offer a better bid, then it goes out to bid, just like everything else. I'm not sure how long his contract lasts, but he's been plowing for a while. I don't know why that would change. So there are things that, that has nothing to do with the road commissioner. McNeil Farms does plowing. They have a contract to do our plowing. The road commissioner does plow. McNeil Farms plows. So I'm assuming McNeil Farms is going to continue to bid and do work right here in our town. And the road commissioner, whether it be an appointed position with foreman roles or whether it be elected road commissioner, we would expect that person to oversee whoever has the contract.
Thank you.
And provide safety.
Okay, I have, sir, you had your hand up, please?
I'm John Marzelli, and the road committee did do extensive work on Pratt Hill, and we got estimates from different people. We had people come from other towns to look at that road that really knew what that, I can tell you that. I'm not the smartest fool in the shed, but I have a lot of people that are smarter that are working with us, you know? So we had a lot of people come down, and when we had two or three people say the same exact thing, we brought all that information to the select board. So we did have a lot say, you are probably been there, you both have road committees, you might not have been there, but Wesley Brown was there, Shafi was there. We had a lot of good input on that road. You mentioned this.
Thank you. Right now, I still have Darryl and Moral who want to, okay, Darryl's out. I have Moral who wanted to speak a second time, and then I have Isaac afterwards. And then I have three other folks who've already spoken twice. Now I have four. Okay, Moral, you have the floor.
I have the floor.
Yeah.
Thank you. My question is, if this article gets voted down, okay, or if it passes, I want to know from the selectmen, select ladies, are you still going to try to micromanage the commissioner or the foreman?
Excuse me. Your question's out of order. It assumes facts not in evidence, and it's argumentative, so for those reasons.
I'm sorry. You're saying that I don't have evidence?
No, I am saying that we're not here to do that tonight. It is out of order. Thank you.
I thought I was making a point of order.
You made a point without the order. How's that? Mission accomplished, Moral.
Very good.
Okay?
I withdraw.
Thank you. Arlene, you had your hand up again. Oh, Larry, you were even before Arlene, so my apologies. Go ahead, Larry.
I just wanted to speak again on the appointed versus let. Leanne said she would like to tend the people here, been in town for a while, and remember they used to be in the appointed position. We had problems with the town clerk, couldn't get her out because of the appointed position. That's why it turned to a voted, elected position, because the selectmen would not do the job. How are we going to get reassurance that if we have problems with somebody you will appoint, that we can get that person removed or out, no? So that the job can be done properly. It's, right now, it's up to the townspeople to vote somebody they trust to do the job. That would require us to trust you to appoint somebody to do the job, and that doesn't matter. From what I've seen on the YouTube videos, I don't have that trust.
Isaac?
So Jennifer, I have a question. Leanne's appointed, but she's not appointed every year, every year she, it's her job. And there are a question about if they're elected, we have a choice to get rid of them? When I worked in the town office, or when I started working in the town office years ago, the issues that were in the town office because of the person, two people before me that were elected, it was a mess. So when you elect someone just based on popularity, you're asking for trouble.
Excuse me, Larry? 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 Please, we're almost done here, right? Let's remember, it's your job to listen respectfully even when you disagree. It's difficult to maneuver, maneuver, maneuver around the issues without judging other people's jobs, but I'm going to ask you again to please avoid doing that. That's not why we're here.
Sorry, the only, sure, the only thing I want to say is, appoint, you can appoint the best person to the job, and that person can be removed if they have to the job company.
Thank you. Randy?
Isaac, just to emphasize, the person doing, appointing is a way to say hiring, right? Hiring, let's use real words, we're hiring someone to do the job. The people, there's more contractors in this room right now. I can see them. There's more guys that work there, that's what we're talking about, than, than those people. So if the, if the board is the ones that are going to make the best educated decision on hiring that person, or the people in town, which might, I'm not saying the majority, but there's at least 20 guys that live in this town that work there or paving, run an excavator like me, something, and have way more understanding of what the job should be than the people that would actually be willing to hire you. See what I'm saying? If they're going to hire another select person or something like that, yeah, they're probably the best person for the job, because that's what they do. But don't expect somebody that doesn't do that for work, the, the road committee, they're not even road people. You know what I mean? The road committee's not even the very people. And they're not going to make that choice, too. I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why they keep saying that the appoint is the way to go, because we get the best person for the job when the people doing the hiring won't know what to do. You know what I mean? You might want to import again, I get it. There's new programs, right? I got three minutes. There's new programs, right? Computer stuff. Why doesn't the road committee do that? Why don't we all work together? Why doesn't, why doesn't Brandon or Bim bring in the hours for the week or when they go to the road committee meeting and one of you nice people that, that are appointed to that? Why don't you, that computer's so good at the computer, why don't you type it up and send it to the state and do something? What's the road committee do? Right? Why won't you help them? And write that form? Yeah, so what? He's not computer savvy. That doesn't matter, that doesn't, obviously doesn't matter to the voter. It doesn't matter to the voter that Bim doesn't give you an email. We could care less. Why doesn't the road committee help him for those things?
Thank you, Randy. Just to be clear here, as I was looking at the names on my list, if you have not spoken, please, Richard, you are on my list, okay? I just, if you have not spoken and you wanted to speak, now would be a good time. Yes, ma'am, would you say your name, please?
My name is Gabrielle, and I've heard a lot of stuff here. Number one, Bim has been in this job for a lot of years. He has invaluable knowledge.
Yes, but we're not here to evaluate him.
I know.
He would likely, would you, he would likely perform well at an interview, right? Because he is so knowledgeable, right? But we're not going to talk about him. We're going to talk about whether we elect or we don't.
Okay. No, I, it doesn't even have to be Bim. This imaginary person has invaluable knowledge. Why are we going to give that up? Why can't somebody who has the other half of the knowledge partner with that person and help them do what needs to be done for the town? Yes, stuff changes. I work in, with a 70, 80-year-old man at work. His knowledge is invaluable to our job. Does he know how to do the computers? No. The younger people help him, and we work together as a team. We are a small town. We should be working together as a team.
Thank you. Sir, the bow cap? I don't know, you told me your name, and I already forgot.
I want to speak in favor of the appointed position, only because after the number of years being at the town meetings, watching the contentious relationships in the board and the road commissioner, and him not being there. I get an appointed position, which I did, is excellent to do. I still want to speak about the liability, because it sounds like from previous speaker that we are giving the town sovereignty, so when the road commissioner goes in 65 feet into a property, they are off the hook. We're going to point the finger at the contractor, not because it was the whim of the select board. Where's the liability? Like, you've already answered it saying the town's off the hook, they have sovereignty. Remember that. They get on your property, they can't get off.
So I have, I have Richard, and then I have Darryl. Richard?
Well, I have two questions. The first one's for you. Is it state law that says that in this informal meeting, we have to form our words into a question?
No.
Or we make a statement?
No, you can make a statement. That's why I said your job is to listen respectfully until it's your turn to speak. You're welcome to make a statement, but we are not going to evaluate individuals. That is not why we are here. That's, that's a line in the sand. That's your job as a voter, but not in this particular meeting. That's not what we're going to talk about. Okay?
And this is for the one job there.
Okay.
Well, three, four months ago, I asked the select board to give me an estimation of how much more money they were going to cost the taxpayers after the Pratt Hill Road project cost $11,000 to $21,000 more than it was supposed to. How much more between now and the end of the year do you estimate you three, you two are going to cost the taxpayers of the town half? And that's my question.
Are you asking about their compensation? Excuse me, can I finish? Are you asking about their compensation for their role? Or you're asking for them to anticipate?
I said that they already cost the town about $21,000. I said, how much more are they going to cost the town between now and June?
Right, but you spoke about, you guys let me know when you're done, and you spoke about Pratt Hill Road. Is that, is it that particular project you're asking about, and you want to know how much more money it will take?
No, well, that's not the only way that they have cost the taxpayers money, but I'm not going to go into all of them. And I want to know an estimate of how much more are this going to cost the taxpayers between now and June.
So there's a budget, I'm assuming, for this current fiscal year that goes through the month of June? Is that correct? So the question is, what is your expectation in terms of additional expenditures between the first week in March and the last week in June? Is there anybody who would like to take a crack at the answer?
Basically, we don't know how much it's going to cost to finish the road on Pratt Hill. Yes, Bim said he would do it for $50,000 to get ready to pay. The bid come back at $61,000, so let's say that's approximately $11,000 more than what Bim had said. So the next project, phase two, will come back as a bid, which more likely is probably going to be over $100,000, I'm guessing. And on top of that, you will probably spend another $125,000 to $150,000 to be paid.
Same question? Is it, is it in response to the same question, yes? Okay, go ahead.
So looking at the numbers, I'm, that's where my focus has been, because that's our job, is to be responsible with your taxpayers' dollars. And so looking over the last five years of road reports, in 2019, we spent $2,500 on Pratt Hill, and that's broken down. 2021, the fiscal year, zero dollars. 2122, zero dollars. 2223, and it is in the annual town report, we spent $71,768 on Pratt Hill Road, not including the $10,000 that we used from the road bond to pay the upper part of it. That is all broken down as well. We had budgeted for $150,000 in our budget last year for Pratt Hill. We spent $61,000 of it. Now, I thought Kathy saying Bim could have, or Bim said he could have it done, whether he did it himself or contracted it out for $50,000. We had to put drainage in for that $61,000. So for the $50,000, I don't know why it couldn't still be ready to go now that we have the proper mitigation in.
Thank you. Richard, I guess this is.
If I understood, the lady in front of you to say, the road is all messed up, so it hasn't been done very well at all, and how much more is that going to cost us?
Is there any additional information about the cost of the Pratt Hill Road that any of you could offer at this time beyond what's already been shared? Okay, thank you. I have Darryl, Lenny, and then Jason. Where's Darryl? And Arlene, was that your hand up? Thank you. Go ahead, Darryl.
I made two points. One, in terms of things costing the town, if you all recall, we had a bond that was for a million and some dollars that we're paying $150,000 back to pay off that bond. In that bond, my understanding is Pratt Hill Road was supposed to be done under the cost of that, or at least part of it. But in terms of that, we had an effort to have another bond, which would have put us at another $150,000 a year paying back. So using bonds to pay for roads, which has been pushed by our current road commissioner, is extremely expensive for the town. Instead of paying for them directly out of the budget from a reserve, creating a reserve which there used to be but got all spent, it costs us a great deal in the interest being paid back. None of the things you just talked about produces anything close to, close to the cost of the interest on those bonds. The other point I was going to make initially was, I hear a lot about the elected road commissioner, and why, why don't we accept what the elected road commissioner, what we have here, three elected select board members who were voted by a majority of the town into their positions. Why isn't we question the issue of elected road commissioner, or we question the capability or the sincerity of our elected select board, but we don't of our road commissioner? We're, we're double standards here.
Lenny?
I agree. Back to what Beverly said, and I think it was, I don't know, something back there. I thought of a compromise that wouldn't disenfranchise voters. What if the road committee was very carefully appointed with all the skills that they're looking for, for free? Every chief our elected road commissioner, and the voters are not disenfranchised. Just a thought.
Jason, Aaron, you're on my list. You've got to wait. Go ahead. Jason, I'm going to ask you, please, not to comment on evaluating others.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I believe that the road committee has proven over the years, I can say this, I can, write me if I can't. I believe the road committee has proven over the years that it wants to work with the road commissioner. Is that big to say? Can I keep going?
Yes, but evaluating the nature of that relationship is not appropriate. Yes, we're all in this together. Yes, that's what you were saying. So just don't evaluate performance. That's the piece.
Okay. Well, the road committee has built up programs over the years, 20 years from what I've heard. They, they built up these, and they follow their years. And wherever those death years may be, they may be. But I was on there, I joined the road committee with the intent of learning, and never had the opportunity to meet anyone to learn anything, which was a shame. I think the road committee would benefit from having one or two of the 20 men in town that work in the district join and help them out. I think that would be a fantastic asset to the, to the community.
Aaron?
We voted for the guy to do the job.
I got a two-part question. First question.
First question, second question, me and some others. Leanne, do we get any FEMA money back this year or do we have some coming? Do we have none coming?
We have some coming, I don't know when.
Okay, so if we have some coming and the board is coming, then Bim doesn't have to file a paperwork, how the hell does that paperwork get filed?
Go ahead, Leanne.
It's actually the emergency management director's job to work with FEMA.
Okay, so...
And, and do the input.
So what's the issue then? I guess my question is, is it the emergency, is the emergency management job to work with FEMA? Why have we given Bim a lot of time but not been able to work with FEMA?
Okay, I think that...
Can I get an answer to that?
Aaron, I'm not even sure that it's a factual statement, so you're, you're...
Who, wait, it's not her.
We're not here to evaluate.
I just want to know how...
I know you are, and I know you're not interested in hearing what I have to say and I'm going to say it anyway.
No, you can just...
Okay? I, absolutely. I'm going to be consistent, I can assure you of that. So we're not going to evaluate. You're going to judge whether you, the process is what's, the process is what the question is, Aaron, and you're going to get a chance to make that decision on Monday. If you want to ask and offer an opinion about it, I will call on you again, but if not, we're going to listen to other people and we're not going to evaluate each other. That's not going to happen. Yes, Aaron?
Can I ask a question?
You just did.
Can I ask another question?
You can, so long as it's not focused on evaluating someone's performance. Again, I answered your question. You want to know, you want to know a process question about something that is not impactful on the decision that's before this body on Monday? Well, then you can research it afterwards by asking them. I have, I've just double checking here. I still have Arlene, excuse me, still have Arlene and Richard, but ma'am, you haven't spoken yet, so I wanted to...
Thank you. Just wanted to say that everybody that's on these committees that we're all batching and talking about are volunteers from our community. We're voluntary, we're trying to be up in the committees and do the work. And then people are being harassed because it's what they're trying to do, trying to learn, and are backing out. So we have to be backing out of committees, and then we have people complaining about it who won't step up and volunteer on committees. So I just want you guys to know that the reason we have people not getting the jobs we're good at, there's a reason, because they're volunteers. I don't want to be on the road committee, not after all the bullshit that is going around here. I don't want to be volunteering on many of the committees. Do you guys? I mean, we need to not bash each other and try to start working together.
So I have... Arlene. Speaker...
Can I ask about the drainage that was mentioned by the select person? About, now it's the drainage, and, and that was covered by Bim in that he would replace the culvert for the drainage problem on Pratt Hill Road. He already had a solution for that, and now you're, you're looking to, for a contract to tend to that, or what, what did you mean?
Arlene, I've got to interrupt here because that, that's a question about a specific project that isn't on point in terms of the process that the town will use to choose. That's why I'm telling you, so...
The road committee has to make that decision, and we're going to have to rely on the road committee and the foreman in making these decisions. And if that hasn't been made, when it could have been done, what did they mean? And now we have to deal with the drainage. You said it. I can't remember how you said it, but you said it, and I put it in my head.
So your question is, how, so Arlene, is your question, how will making this change correct that problem on Pratt Hill Road? Well, that's what you need to understand. Is there someone who could answer that question? How will changing the selection of the road commissioner to appointment, how will that solve the problem on Pratt Hill Road?
When you've already been given a...
Well, we're going to get an answer, if there is one, that's the point.
If we have a project road commissioner that does foreman work, they will be required to work with the road committee and the select board. They will not be allowed to not, to miss meetings or, or say, I'm going to do it my way. They're going to have to work together as a team to make Pratt Hill and every other project safe, sound, and built the way it should be.
Thank you. I have, I have Richard. Yes?
The way that, this is more of a statement, the way that the current select board has attempted to micromanage everything that Bim does, and the way that they intend to micromanage what they're going, what they call him a foreman, because they had a list, bing, 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 at the last select board meeting of exactly what they were going to have him do. And, and I don't understand how they expect that to be a positive result when the select board and the road committee all together don't have one tenth the knowledge that our current road commissioner has.
Randy?
I keep comparing the two. It's unfair to compare that folks to the road commissioner because they don't know, you guys don't know dirt work, you don't know what we're... And some of you even said you join committees to learn, and that's great, you know what I mean? And then you've said that guys like me that know what we're talking about should evolve. The problem is, guys like me are out working and we don't really have time, you know, don't have time for it. My question is, why do you have to have the road committee in the first place? We hire a guy or a lady, whoever we see fit as a community group to take care of our roads. Why can't that person just directly answer to the select? Why do we have to have this extra entity that nobody voted for that doesn't seem to be helping, seems to be wanting all these things? They want all these things, right? They want, I understand, want clean paperwork, I get it, you've got to run a tight ship. You've got to run a tight ship when it comes to paperwork, right? Maybe I would put some kind of slack on that. Like I said before, we didn't care as a community, and we still voted for that person because we trust that person to take care of the roads, not paperwork, okay? So as far as paperwork, if the road committee should start helping the road commissioner with stuff like that and working as a team, or maybe we just don't need the road committee at all? I'd like to look into the past a little bit of when we decided as a town that we needed a road committee. At some point, we didn't have one, and then at some point, we did. I wonder why that decision was made. And then I'd also like to point out that it must have been 2013, 2012, we were in the same conversation. I don't know if it was brought up to you folks before. It was a different road commissioner, it was the same conversation, we got shot down. It was the same exact conversation. You could look it up, maybe, Leanne, in the past minutes.
I remember.
It was a death minute, needing, same style, only it was sweating hot bullets because it was like July, it was hot. I remember it was a hot day, and it was way harder to be in this room than it was tonight. But it was the same, same people talking, making the same points almost, okay? This town's not going to get rid of a right to vote. This is not going to happen, okay? This, it's not going to happen to the people that want to make that happen, it's not going to. It's time to waste everyone's time. It's a repeating issue.
So we've been here for more than an hour and a half. Multiple people have spoken multiple times. If you have something to offer that has not been said, would you raise your hand now? Something that has not been said. Lenny, you have the floor.
I would be very capable of working with the road commissioner, and I will offer my computer and research skills in that light.
Is there anyone else who wishes, who wishes to say something that has not been said? If you, if it's been said, assume that we've been listening respectfully and it's been heard. It may not be that we all agree, but we have listened. Yes, Laurel, something that has not been said?
Well, maybe it's been said, but I'm going to try to make a comparison here. Now, somebody mentioned, and I won't say the person's name, but there is, if you have a bond, it's going to cost you, yes, principal and interest, okay? But there have, I have heard from the horse's mouth that Pratt Hill Road could have been done for a certain amount of money, okay? And so with that, and we know it costs 61 for, for Phase One, we don't have an idea, although there's been an estimate for just the road work, and I'm not sure if it's, it's going to be $100,000 or maybe a little bit more for the rest of it. Well, there's $100,000, $180,000, okay? Now, with that $180,000, okay, and it would have cost 60 and 40, there was 100, there's 80,000 more. Now, that kind of offsets a little bit of the interest and principal on any bond. So I'm looking at, one, it's not a complete wash perhaps, but it at least cuts it down. Then it, it's going to depend on who you get for contractor, okay? It's all...
Laurel, we're talking about a process issue, so, so help me understand what that tells anybody in the room about whether it changes or it doesn't?
Somebody made a point that, you know...
Yeah, well, that doesn't mean we're going to talk about it. If it doesn't answer that question, you're done, honey.
You know what? You know what? The last, the last time, that the last time I saw you here, okay? You were ready to throw me out.
Well, I'm not tossing you. You misbehaved.
Oh, you're going to boot me?
No, I'm going to tell you that, really what we're looking at is what is, the issue is the process of how we do this. There's a way we do it now, there's a proposal that it be done differently. If you wish to speak and it has not been said, whether by you or by somebody else, I will call on you. Richard.
It was mentioned earlier about the road committee in a two-year plan or a three-year plan and a five-year plan. My comment would be that the way the weather is nowadays and everything else, any time spent on developing this two-year or a three-year plan or a five-year plan is time completely wasted.
So again, our purpose this evening was to convene in order to get, if we, if there are answers, get answers to questions, preparing voters to come forward and vote at town meeting, special town meeting on Monday. You've had an opportunity to do that. Are you going to say something that has not been said? Has it been asked already?
I don't believe so.
Go ahead.
Well, regarding the, the cost of this road commissioner, it's 27,000 an hour, of course, he's been in charge of being at all meetings and stuff like that. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, what is the figure you're going to recommend to the budget committee for this, this position? I think the current road commissioner budget is 29,000 to start, that I need to work the way, that's a part-time position.
Excuse me, excuse me. The question was answered. Again, we're not making any decisions here tonight. You all are going to make the decision on Monday if you're available and you come. Ma'am, I don't know your name, but you had not spoken yet, so we'll hear you. What is your name?
Carol Buckle.
Thank you, Carol.
So my question is, do you have a, a current job description for this? I've asked a couple different times and I have, have got a question, no, any answer, no, they don't have it. So if you don't have a job description, then how, how do you know if that person is doing a good job? Or what, they, they, they have to know what they need to do in order to do their own job?
Well, you're a charred road commissioner or an appointed road commissioner by form? It doesn't matter, either one. So the state has, we have the state road commissioner. That was just a piece of page taken out of...
Carol, let's get, let's let them answer your question. Carol's asking if there is to be an appointed position, will there be a job description?
There will be.
But there is not a job description yet?
Just a task list, that's all we have.
Okay. Carol, does that answer your question? Well, there isn't one. Your question was, is there one? And the answer is not yet.
So how can we make an informed decision if we don't know what that person is supposed to do?
So there's a task list on the back table.
Yep.
Great. That's what we've developed so far on where the person should be doing.
So that's, essentially, that's the information that's available now. Okay? Paulie?
So in other words, we're being asked to vote blind on this just by going off this because there is no job description?
Well...
I would think would be...
There isn't a job description yet, and you can choose how to interpret that, okay? So again, I'm, I'm looking around the room because I don't see a whole lot of point in hanging around if we're just repeating ourselves. You know, Aaron, I don't know how I'd get through this meeting without your help. I'm sorry. Carol?
So also, it says track document and report stolen damage and, and report to FEMA and MIMA. So does the emergency management agent do that? So, so...
Do the last part, do all of it? Is that what your question is?
Right. The first question is, I...
Do you want, do you want to get an answer?
Yep.
Okay.
I just put a little thing in there. I, I live here in Oxford, I am town manager for town green, I'm road commissioner, town clerk, and stuff, and emergency management director. So there's a lot of questions about, a lot of questions, so, but one of them was FEMA, MIMA, and all those damages, electronic.
So your question is, will, will this person do that or will they work with the emergency management director? I'm looking, I don't know who has the answer, but it's not me.
Right now, the road commissioner is very important to get the information together, but it's the emergency, emergency management director that works with FEMA.
So it's a teamwork, it's a teamwork situation. Does that answer your question, Carol? Okay, Aaron?
I think the point Carol's trying to make is, is what I was trying to ask everyone, Carol, let me ask, is if Leanne or whoever the emergency management director is already joining, what's the problem?
So I'll repeat one last time because I'm the one that's doing it over and over again. Is there anybody who wishes to add something that hasn't been said yet?
Can we just answer that question?
No.
Sure.
No. Is there anything that hasn't been said?
Why, why can't we?
I'm sorry.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Who was our emergency management director?
Who is the emergency management director for the town? Leanne? Leanne has that responsibility. Yes, Laurel?
I'd like to ask a question. I think it was mentioned, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, if there was any account for the road commissioner was 29,000, am I correct in what you said?
I think that's the annual salary we've adjusted.
Yeah, okay, that's what you were...
Hold on, Leanne, can you read the numbers? So I'll do numbers up here, so.
Correct.
22,704 for this year.
What's that?
Mileage. Mileage? Right.
Hang on just a second, that's because I don't have the answer yet. When there's an answer? Well, repeat it. Hang on just a second, I want to give an answer. Leanne and Susan, are you in agreement of the numbers? Because until you are, I don't want to give them.
22,704 for road commissioner wages.
22,704?
Hang on.
This is, that, that is what's budgeted?
For current year.
Okay.
In this year?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Can you tell me what a road commissioner made the previous year and has drawn this year?
This year would be $695 so far. Last year was $16,005.
$16,000.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, sorry, I don't know your name. Dave.
How do you know that it's not going to go way over budget if you're on call 24/7, you know? How can you predict not going over budget, being on call 7 days a week, 24 hours a day?
So our current road commissioner is on call 24/7 right now.
Yep.
In many cases...
He's not an hourly employee, though.
He is not an hourly employee.
Oh, he is?
Yes. Yes. He's an honest employee. So it could happen on either, on either our current elected road commissioner, or it could happen as an appointed road commissioner, depending on what the emergencies are.
So I'm going to thank you all for coming, for offering your thoughts. Encourage you to come again on Monday, because on Monday, in addition to listening to each other, you'll have an opportunity to participate in the decision. Today was just meant to be a hearing, so you could ask questions and share your thoughts, advocate for what you believe. Sure.
What time do you vote?
The meeting begins at 6:30, and there are only two items on the agenda, and the first one is electing a moderator. The second one is the question about the process for determining who's in charge of the roads. So I would say fairly quickly, it would probably be happening right around 6:30. When the vote happens will depend on how long the debate is.
Is there a time zone, or is it 6:30?
The meeting starts at 6:30.
I mean, normally we have 12 hours to vote, how long is there?
Well, this is a special town meeting, this is not a, this is not a polls open. Sir, do you have a question? I can't hear you.
What, what people can't make my head? Is there an alternative?
As I, well, I got your question, but I can't answer you unless you can just touch just a minute. It's a special town meeting. If you're not here, you don't get to vote, is the answer. You don't have to like it, it's just the way it works. It's not my rules. I'm sorry. It's, it's, no, no. I understand. It's a state law, I didn't make it up. It's a special town meeting, which requires your physical presence, it's not a special polls open opportunity. So-
No one can vote like during the day?
That's correct. It is the same way at your annual town meeting, you can't vote unless you're there. With a special, no, you don't. With a special town meeting, you have, it's the same, you have to be present. And I'm sorry if that disenfranchises some folks, that's just the way the law is written. So, so thank you, thank you for listening. I can't hear you. I believe the meeting's already been posted at this site. So, as a result, I don't think the, I don't think the answer is yes, I think the answer is no. Leanne?
Can I just explain if we're not electing anyone, it's not a secret ballot election? That's going to be what you'll have.
Right. It is a special town-
All of you are here Monday night, 4/4.
All right, Karen, you're welcome.